You're watching CHCO TV's gavel-to-gavel coverage of the November 6, 2024 Special Council Meeting and Special Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Municipal District of St. Stephen. I'm Florence Mitchell. In the Special Council Meeting, council will move to spend $1,000 plus HST to contract lasting legacy carpentry to secure the property located at 449 and 1/2 Milltown Boulevard under the Dangerous or Unsightly Premises bylaw. In the Special Committee of the Whole Meeting, committee will discuss the 2025 municipal budget, specifically the general government budget and the recreation budget. Now, let's join council in the Moosehead Room at the Garselin Civic Center in St. Stephen.
I would like to welcome you to the Municipal District of St. Stephen's Special Council Meeting of Wednesday, November 6 at 6:00. And I would like to call the meeting to order. First of all, before we begin, I would like to respectfully acknowledge that we are gathered today on the ancestral unceded territory of the Pasco Tumacari people. I need an approval for the agenda. I would like to have a motion and a secondor.
Second.
Councillor Wright, Councillor Eastman. The resolution is that the proposed agenda for the Special Council Meeting of November 6, 2024 be approved. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay? Motion, carry. Now, I would like to make a motion to close the meeting to the public. I'd like to have a mover and secondor.
No mover.
Councillor Harding.
Second.
Councillor Heisler. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion, carry. And that is to pursuant to Section 68- bracket 1 of the Local Governance Act, council move to a closed session for the purpose of discussing potential litigation matter. We have a request for decision, and the recommendation is that, sorry, it is a recommendation of Protective Services that council authorizes the expenditure of 1,000 plus HST to contract lasting legacy to secure 449 and 1/2 Milltown Boulevard under bylaw 12-23 and bylaw respecting dangerous or unsightly premises. I need a mover?
I'll move.
I'll move.
Okay, Councillor Wright and a secondor?
That one.
Okay, Mayor McCackran? Are we, do we have any questions or comments?
I do want to.
Okay, Councillor Greenlaw?
So, we can revisit this at any time, however. If we choose to board it up right now and it starts being an issue, then we can bring this back again and go the other way, correct?
Yes, that would be correct. Now that we've met the timelines, we can, we can bring it back.
Anybody else? Councillor Otis?
So, this is essentially just making a motion to secure the building for now, as is where is it?
Okay. Anybody else? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Nay? Do we know?
Okay, motion, carry. Please, may you adjourn the special council?
Okay. I need a mover and secondor to adjourn the meeting, Special Council Meeting. Councillor Otis and Councillor Cornish. All those in favor?
Aye.
Nay? Motion, carry. Hey, welcome back. I guess, Jeff, I'm going to call on you for the budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It'll be divided duties from staff this evening with Mr. Sumner taking the majority of the trip through the Culture and Recreation Operating Budget as we've currently got it drafted. And then I'll take the second half, which is the general operating, or general, general government section dialogues are there. So, I'll run the slides for Kev and I'll pipe in if I, if I need to add something.
I do want to talk.
Do you want to take away, Kev?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So, yeah, first slide. This is just a.
Alan here. Want me to grab Alan?
Alan's in the way.
There we go. Go ahead, Kev, just keep.
Okay, yeah, so first slide is just general administration costs. We budgeted a slight increase on last year, and our actuals are there in that third column as well. Memberships, that's a breakdown of the memberships that the community services department may be in. That could be the Canadian Parks and Rec Association, Rec MB, and our outdoor, outside phone bills, our costs of anything related to our phones and our advertising as well. So, not a huge number of GLs in that line, but we tried to keep it as close as we could to, to 2024's budget, so. Move down mine as well. Outside recreation, breakdown of, this is really our parks and recreation staff who are outside. You can see their, their wages, the costs of slight decrease, actually. We beat, we get some subsidization through the Canada Summer Jobs and the New Brunswick Seed Program. We did take on an extra unionized position in the mowing crew, so that, that is good to have another adult out there. You can see the other columns, the vehicle insurance, the vehicle maintenance, trying to keep it as close as possible there. General costs, training, uniforms, electricity, that's all the lights that we, we occasionally have to change, whether it's at Jake Donahue or the cotton mill. Those are ongoing things. It's amazing how quickly they burn out. We try and keep those upgraded to LEDs so they last a little bit longer. Supplies and horticultural supplies, that's essentially, that's everything that our parks crew, as well as the parks maintenance, that's for everything that's covered in all our parks and green spaces and trails, our athletic field at Rotary, Rotary Field. That is just the operational costs that, that are included in that. These don't.
Pause, is there for a second?
Yeah.
So, just one of the conversations I thought would be good to have here with all the slides up is the, you guys have a SMART goal about basically enhancing the, the aesthetics and the horticultural components of our operations. This was where that, where that budget line would live, it's the $30,000 at Horticultural Supplies. That would be maintaining pretty much the status quo for that. So, if you wanted to work towards that, one of your SMART goals, which would, you know, provide more resources into that, this, this would be a budget line you'd consider amending if that was something that you wanted to discuss tonight or at a future meeting, that's fine. But this is the spot, and we have asked the horticulturist to start thinking about if another $5,000 or something, or $10,000 was put onto her table, what, how she might apply that to the, to different projects. I think she's still working on, on playing with those plans a little bit. But, yeah, I just wanted to note that you do have a SMART goal that, that is affected in this area, so I'll put that at the, on the table for you. Nope. Madam Chair?
I'm sorry. Councillor Harding?
Thank you. In this budget, I thought it was in 2025 that maybe we're going to be involved in communities in bloom. I thought it was 2025, and I have been.
Is that, would that be reflected in that budget?
Yeah, if, if we were to look at that, we would probably have to double the, the cost of the horticultural supplies because I've looked into communities in bloom, I've worked in it in the past, it's, it is a $25,000 to $30,000 project. It's not just flowers, there is everything that goes with it, there is environmental studies, it's our water, it's our recycling, it's our garbage, it's, it's everything that comes through the community. I think, not to kind of put that to the side, I think, you know, our, our reputation in Charlotte County is very good in regards to our horticultural displays. We are, we're not quite at the ceiling, you know, there is room for a little bit of growth. Like Jeff said, there's room there. It just doesn't mean if we, if we want to go to that step, we, you know, we've got to increase maybe additional vehicle. It's, it's more students, it's, it's, you know, we've got one horticulturist in Jendao and two seasonal staff doing mowing and parks maintenance. So, they do, they do a great job with the students they have, and we, like I said, we get subsidized through the Canada Summer Jobs and those summer grants, which really does help. There's so many, so many buckets and baskets that they can water because it does take a heck of a lot of watering and fertilizing and just, just managing those on a, and they are in over the weekend as well during the summertime. It's not Monday to Friday, you know, seven to four, it's, it's an ongoing thing, but it would have to see an increase a little bit more, you know, not just to go through communities in bloom, it's, it's not off the table, it's just, we would have to really come up with a, a plan if we wanted to do that.
Okay, the only reason I say that is because we had it here, maybe 50, were you here just laying when we had communities in bloom? And it went over very well with the community, so I thought that maybe we had some extra money, and I know that it's more than flowers, so, yeah, so. Thank you.
Morning.
Just a question, Kevin, is that, it says outside recreations, that, that does not include pools, tennis courts, or anything like that? Or is that in there at all, so?
You're too quick for me, Brian, I, we're, we're just not there yet, so.
I thought it might be something coming, I just want to make sure.
It's, yes, it's, it's, it's on the way, so.
So, just, may I, Madam Chair? So, I think just to wrap up Councillor Harding's commentary, what we, what we could do is, we, Kev, you and I could work on a mini-budget for communities in bloom. And as you say, when we get down to the, to the end of the day, when we're looking at where we're at with our bottom line, that we can make sure we have a budget there, and that can be a debate you have amongst other priorities that might also be on the table. Maybe that's the best way to approach it.
Question? Question, Madam Chair?
Yes.
No, he's serious. He's on my computer.
Hi. So, no, my question would be, can someone also investigate the, the return on investment on that communities in bloom? So, instead of, you know, giving them $30,000, putting rooms and board and feed them for the time that they're here, can we invest it into our own horticultural and maybe a way for it anyway? Just make sure that someone could just share with us, and myself and council, the benefits of the being recognized in the communities in bloom. To our meeting.
My question is, when is it that you normally have to apply, you have to apply for, is that like after Christmas, or?
Yes, it's, it's usually the new year, they just have to align their, the judges that come out and spread the word, so to speak. It's, it's, yeah, it's sometimes it's, other communities that have done this for 25 years, they use their volunteers, and it's just getting over, all their ducks in a row, so, yeah.
And also, I have a question about the grant, like you said, you get for students, right? I'm sure like the applications haven't gone in for those now. Is that included in that budget? Like, what, for what we spent in the last year? Was that amount included in that?
We, I always keep the, the wages to the full potential in the sense that if they, if we don't get successful, if we're not successful in those applications, some years that we get nine positions like we did in 2022. For the last two years, we've had only five. So, it's hit and miss what we can get, and so I always make sure that we do have, you know, the bare minimum of, of staff employed, just in case. But, yeah, that's kind of reflected in the, in the wages that some years it's, it's a little, we don't use as much in the actuals, and then other, other times we, we get some support.
Thanks, Karen.
Kevin? Kevin, just another question. For our audience and even myself, could you give me a definition of what this is? I really don't know what this community of bloom is about.
Yeah, Communities in Bloom is an award which is awarded regionally or provincially, I think, and then the provincial winners can go into a national competition. Obviously, you know, from the title, there is a perception that there is, it's all about the floral displays, but it's also, you're also, I think there's seven categories, I can do it, a small presentation next time. There's, you know, what are, like I said, with recycling, garbage pickup, your infrastructure, your, your water and so, your utilities, how you are, if you're reclaiming water in a splash pad, for example, or there's also, you know, your traffic and light pollution. It really is, it covers the whole community, they come in and they, they assess that. I'd have to be sure, I have to check if it's kind of planning and if there's any, you know, future developments, if, if that's taken into account, but it really is, it's a lot more than just flower, flowers, and it's, and it's a, I don't, you know, it does need a hardcore group and the community to buy into this because they also look at residential gardens, homes, properties, and, and they are, they are scored, they are judged on how, how they appear. So, yeah, we can do municipally, we can do our facilities, but it's also everybody in the community is assessed, and, and, yeah, they, they take into account certain situations, and, and if you, if you've been a previous winner, or if you, if you're a first-time competitor, but it, it takes a lot of work, and like I say, from, from multiple departments and looking at everything, because we're all trying to improve the community, but, yeah, it's, it's a complete buy-in.
I guess I'm still live. Just a question, when we refer to this now, we used to be the urban area, I'm assuming, that was supplied to the rural area also, award one and three?
I believe so, because, because we are the Municipal District of St. Stephen, so everything would be taken into account.
People in the rural areas have floral arrangements, things like this, I just want to make sure that they do realize that this does come through, it's not just in town, it's the whole municipal district. Okay?
Good question, Ryan, good question.
Councillor Eastman?
So, if we're recognition, recognized nationally as being the prime, is there a cash reward?
I don't believe there is, it's, it's deplored, it, it is the, the honor of, and then you can go internationally and represent obviously Canada. It's, yeah, you don't get the financial gain sadly, so.
So, we're spending money and not getting nothing for it.
Well, we are, we're improving our community.
Yeah, I suppose, yeah.
He's bragging rights, yeah.
Okay, anybody else?
All clear.
Okay, I guess Kev, you're back on.
Yeah, and just to finish up, the, the last row there is, is the program initiative. That's a, an increase from 2023, the multi-sport program started in 2024. That's not just based out of the Milltown pool, we use the Rotary Field and tennis courts, and we are planning that bigger and better again for 2025. And it's, it was very popular, and that kind of covers the, the outside recreation. Unless I missed anything, if there's any questions there, let me know.
I think when I think about recreation, I think about crime prevention opportunities for youth, so when it comes to the parks maintenance, does that actually include the athletic fields, and is there a possibility if Anglophone South and MDSS can work out an agreement that we would have to budget in the cost of maintenance for those fields potentially? Is that something that's already been considered, or is that something that, just because I know, like, horticultural expenses, I mean, there is a benefit to physically look at it, and of, of course, it really impacts our community, it's a beautiful thing for us to look at every day, but trying to think of more tangible ways to actually engage in crime prevention with youth. So, if we could put $30,000 towards maintenance of ASDS fields, that would be my, my priority, I guess, as an individual councillor, I don't know how everyone else feels about that, but, yeah, recreation's definitely the, the key to crime prevention, so.
Won't they give us permission to do it?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Yeah, so the, the budget that's in front of you does not include anything for ASDS fields. That's still an ongoing conversation, but, so, yeah, as the, as we develop the budget and more conversations happen, it may be, it's very possible we're going to have to show up with a, an amendment to that parks maintenance side. You're probably lowballing it at 30,000 to, based on our past numbers. I think it was, our last contract we had for, with the contractor was closer to 80, I think.
Yeah, 60.
So, but, yeah, just keep that in mind, but, yes, it's something that, well, as we get down to the, again, we get down to the bottom lines, we have the list of priorities we want to knock off, it'll be on the list for sure.
Okay. Kev?
So, so, question?
Yes.
So, we're going to leave it, we're going to leave this budget as is now and revisit after we see the other department heads, and then they can adjust, is that what we're doing?
Yes, Your Worship, this, the, the intention is to get through essentially status quo budgets unless there's things that council automatically wants us to make sure we're considering right off the get-go, and then look at what the bottom line looks like and, and lay out the different priorities and, and select the top priorities for inclusion.
Okay, I'll continue, next slide, Jeff, is the, yeah, this is a, the WT Booth Outdoor Pool in Milltown. This is the next section of the, the outside recreation budget. As you can see, wages and benefits, a lot of our students are working at the, the outdoor pool. Slight decrease in, from 2023, we had to extend the, the season of the outdoor pool because of the, the pool deck project, which was taking place here at the GCC. And, and, you know, we have got good numbers of lifeguards now, so we're in a slight increase, but we're in, we're in a good position regarding that. Telephone, again, that's for the outdoor pools phone. No real change there. Electricity, did see a decrease, we haven't used as much electricity in 2025, so we're, we're going for slight decrease there in, in electricity, we'll, we'll hope that it doesn't affect us. Cleaning supplies, chemicals, all very similar, same as Aaron's equipment and uniform. His security, that's his cameras, because unfortunately, we are victims of vandalism at the outdoor pool as well, so if there's any questions on the outdoor pool, please let me know.
Yeah, you kind of went through the electricity there, why, it's kind of a significant drop, I mean, on the big scheme of things, but, I mean, from 7,500 to, and you were saying they use the pool actually more in 2023 because of the deck, so why would it be even less than, than that? Or what do you, or what kind of upgrades were done that would reduce electricity that much?
I think we went a little higher in 2024 because we knew it might be a, a longer season. I think it's also dependent on the weather as well, if it's a, it's a warmer summer, we, we don't use as much electricity, and we do look at the demand on that and get that kind of idea, and, yes, we, we're trying to save some, some money based on the 2024 numbers, which we've got the, the invoices so far, so.
There, what is the actual, do you have the actual for 2024?
It was 60, oh, I see, it's what, $6,800 or something?
Yeah, and it's, and it's done now, so.
And the season's over, right? So, we got all the buildings.
Yeah, I just had a question there. It just didn't make sense. Question?
And because you already mentioned this is a status quo budget, I'm assuming that that does, the repairs to the pool does not include the much-talked-about liner?
I was just going to actually jump in on that. So, much like the, the parks didn't, we didn't talk about resurfacing of tennis courts, which are obviously on the, on the wish list, those are, both those things will be capital items, so we'll be looking at that as part of the capital budget, which is a long list of roads and various other priorities, but, but, yeah, this is be to operate essentially as we were, but we are hopeful that we can find the funding to do the liner this year, which also will help with some of the other costs in this budget as far as chemicals, pumps, and how often the pumps are running and everything else, if we keep the water actually inside the, inside the pool. So, so, yeah, we are, we are definitely going to be discussing that project in, in later time with you folks.
Kevin, just a small point, that 1,800 telephone, is that for a one business line going into there, or is it work off your Centrex system here? $1,800 seems to be a lot of money, it's just one line going there, like one business line?
Yes, that's correct, yeah. I mean, we, we, it's one of the things that we, we allow users more often, like the kids that want to call mom or dad and say, you know, come and pick me up, it's just one of those community things that we do.
Does that feed off your switchboard here?
No.
Just, it's a private, that's what the rate is now, 1,800?
I believe as well, we have to keep it on 12 months of the year, we, you know, we can't say it's a seasonal line, we have to keep it, so.
Rules have changed probably since I've been around, usually you cut that off at seasonal. Maybe you want to, did you check with Rogers and Bell? Is there a difference between the two?
If I, if I may, Madam Chair? You're going to see telephone lines in the next little while over these budget lines, and to say that the bane of administration's existence right now is, it would be an understatement. We're constantly trying to figure out why our, our bills are the way they are, and it's the truth. We removed several lines from the fire hall lasting, over the last couple of years, and yet our, our costs for, for phones have been going up at that facility. So, we are actively chasing those, those costings because we, we agree, we don't think we should, we think we're overpaying for our, our phone systems, especially outside of this particular building, which, which did get upgraded to the new system. So, I think the point is taken very well that we need to figure it out, and we're, we're chasing it, but we haven't quite locked down the solution yet.
No, just a question, I just wanted to find out that because, probably dating myself, but you might be able to feed that backfeed through your Centrex system here, where the phone could be used, you're actually using the, your facilities here, and I would think it'd be a reduced late because basically you're talking about a off-premises extension to there, so I'd just say, just okay, you might, you might get it, and I know it's, it's a lot of fun, I've been there and bought a t-shirt. Okay, thanks, Jeff.
We're trying, we're chasing.
Anybody else? Okay.
Yeah, just, the next slide is just one additional line in the outside, it's the last line in the outside recreation, it's just the community events line. It's held at 40,000 in regards to the 2024 budget, looking for the same. The actual from 2023 was slightly less. The, there's a list there, Canada Day, New Brunswick Day, the International Festival, which goes, everything that goes with that, and Chocolate Fest, obviously the, the week before, fireworks that, that go with that, the Summer Concert Series, which is very pop, very popular. Our, our events are, you know, we, we had the different events inside the, the GCC, different GL, but, but the outside recreation, we try and do as much there as, as well as we can, the Christmas Parade. So, yeah, that, that's a breakdown of, of our events, it's. It's trying to keep it as good, you know, a greater value for money as we can for everyone and offer as little price like we do for Canada Day. There's very few times when we actually charge for our community events, so.
Just, Madam Chair, just, I think that's the important, really important thing to keep in mind and Kevin, we shouldn't put it in the notes on this slide, is this particular line is the, is the one that, it's an event that has essentially no revenue generation expectation. Whereas you'll see later, we have something called special events and those are, we are designed, the money that we set aside there are designed to be cost neutral at worst or revenue generating events. So we divide up the two because we find that they're very different approaches to how that money will be expensed. So just something to keep in mind when you're looking at this, that this is the, we're just spending it, we're not getting anything back for it other than the community spirit and those kinds of things that we do.
Do you put a line for the other events?
We do, we might be on the next slide. There are a couple of slides up, yeah.
So the next slide is recreational facilities, it's moved into away from outdoor recreation. This is the Border Arena, which we currently use for our cold storage, shared between community, community services and public works. I think corporate services use a little section as well. And yes, it's surprising to see $0 of repairs in 2023 because we were a victim of some vandalism there. And thanks to Sean, his department must have covered the costs there. So we had a break in last night, no, two days ago. So plywood and making sure everything is secure in there is an issue. Electricity, trying to keep it again as close as we can. It's, it's an old arena which does, when you turn the lights on, you, you hear them, you can almost hear the meter changing. So it's unfortunate, it's, those costs are what they are, so. If there's any questions about the Border Arena? Next slide is the Gasoline Civic Center. And the breakdown there is first of all, the administrative section. This is wages and benefits for the, this is the front desk, the events, the staff that work here. Slight increase, some of those stuff are unionized, so that would see an increase there. Same with students, prices, their wages have gone up with various minimum wages and certifications that they receive. Training, that's for, again, no real increase, that's myself and some of my team that share that line. Advertising, marketing and promotions, that is a line which, when we get requests, donations, we try and support, whether it's a community group that needs them or a school, we use that line for requests, for a family pass or promotional like bags or clothing that we offer and raffles, so we use that line there. The rink boards, arena signage, that's all the, the expenses of all the signage and advertising that we have. We don't have the Irishman this, this winter, but hopefully that shouldn't damage us too much. But, you know, we have that offsetting as well with the revenue that we get as well, so. And then finally, computer servicing and IT, there is slight increase there, we do.
Decrease.
Yeah, sorry, decrease, yeah, we're trying to save money and we have another line as well, which we can get from, so. If there's any questions on?
Yeah, I have a question. Can you explain to the, mostly to the public and council, I suppose, the, where you mentioned the Irishman have canceled, how, you know, how long term around time, like we just found out that they were playing this year like, you know, a few weeks ago, really. So to replace that event is going to take some time for events teams to start looking at that schedule, just so people understand that, you know, what it takes to fill that void.
Yes, there certainly is, it does hit us, we'll get further into, you know, how that's going to affect us further on in the the food and beverage side of it. But yeah, we are fortunate that there is still some demand for the ice time. We do have, you know, great relationship with the, the high schools, the male and female teams that will use it. It is going to affect us, there is a little bit more availability, but minor hockey, they've got a strong program. Charlotte County Minor Hockey, they use it as well. We do have some senior hockey with the Rusty Blades and there is also pickup hockey. So we are, we are, yeah, seeing if there is any opportunities to fill those ice times. But yeah, that short turnaround, it gave us a bit of a wake up to do something about it, so.
Thank you.
I think additionally, I mean, Kev rightly so, he gets focused on the ice time. Michelle Vest and her, and her team have, over the last few years, really demonstrated the ability to pick up the voids when they happen. The farmer's market went away, but it didn't, they picked it up and ran it quite successfully, I think, over the last year. The trade show wasn't going to happen, but it did because our, because our team picked it up. So I mean, they've shown over the last couple of years, the ability to, to see a change, see a void and find a way to pick up the slack and keep things going for the community. So I have every confidence that, you know, the lack of the, of the games that we used to bring the community out to, to an event and create revenue, that they'll, they'll find new things to try going forward. So, you know, it's, I have a lot of confidence in that team to figure out the best way to handle the, this unfortunate situation until hopefully it rectifies itself.
Thank you.
Yeah, for example, the Glow Skate, it doesn't bring in the revenue that, you know, the Irishman Games did, but it was hugely successful, you know, a couple of weeks ago, way more than the one during the summer for obvious reasons, kids are here and in school, they're not away. And the rink, you know, and our equipment library, there was families queuing up for equipment. So yeah, that we will lose something in the revenue, but still the community is coming out, trying sports, getting active and coming out together, so that's a good thing, so.
We'll double check the.
Yeah, we can.
Excel sheet. We were transposing numbers on the fly, so it's very possible, miss entered.
Okay, next section moving into is the operations and maintenance. This is the, the area, you know, that we, we are in a 10 year old building, there's, there's things that break sadly. They are getting a little bit older. Wages, again, a slight increase, unionized staff. We have got a good number of staff, we've got eight, so everyone is, they're never working alone, which is a safety matter. They, you know, the, the clothing budget, we kept that the same. Training, there's a slight increase. We have to recertify staff on our pool certification every, I think it's three years. So that's a, there's a group of those guys coming through. There's also arena levels one and two, which new staff, which we've taken on, two new staff this winter because two have moved on. So it's getting those staff up to speed, that includes Jeremy's personal, sorry, professional development. He's actually traveled today to a rec facilities conference in Edmonton for really good, for $2,000, really good value. But he's, he's on the Rec NB board as one of the facility board members and is a great representative of St. Stephen on a provincial level. So it's great to see, you know, that, you know, our staff, they are getting, you know, increased training and they're getting the skills that they need. The arena equipment, maintenance and repair, we've held that the same as with the cleaning supplies and equipment. Slight increase on the building maintenance repair, we saw the HVAC pump blow about six weeks ago, which is why any of the gym users amongst us would feel how it was like a swan or upstairs. It's one of those things, we've had a couple of compressors go in recent years and they are, you're talking, you know, 12, $15,000. So one of these things just goes and it can really impact our budget and we try and look after it. We have to, you know, if we have to postpone a project for another year, we will. We've had camera upgrades and we've had different projects that we're waiting to do. And these are just things that we're trying to work through, so. Security decrease there, just that's with the reflection on the fewer Irishman Games. We don't need the security crews that come through, so we've cut back on that and the cleaning contracts. Those are for our, like, different clean companies that come in or support our, their supplies that we need, so. If there's any questions on that section, then we continue on the next page, so.
The power, Bill, is that on another one coming?
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Chair, just one note, just when people are looking at the 2023 actual versus what we're budgeting for the building maintenance and repair, or sorry, the arena equipment maintenance and repair, 2023 is actually the anomaly year. That was the, the year of the, the year of the gray squirrel, as we called it around here, where we had, I think it was twice.
Yeah.
In the same year, we had gray squirrels decide to get in transformers and blow up the power and cause us some, some damage. So there's, there is a rationale as to why that one's high, it's, which that one, it was the actual, the 2023 is the anomaly. We're just getting back to kind of the normal trend.
So the pieces of equipment that are going, are they going based on kind of standard timelines?
The heavy plant, you mean, the compressors or, yes, yeah, they are 10 years old. Our water doesn't always like our pipes, it's a very heavy war here and it's just, I don't want to say this is how it's going to be because we do, we're doing well. Jeremy's got a great preventive maintenance plan in place. We have one company now that comes in rather than several and have various opinions, they work with us very closely and they get here very quickly when we need them. So yeah, I think, I think we're in a good place considering how, you know, we're all getting. Okay, can you just throw up the next slide? Yeah, so next section just, again, continues Jeremy's area, the floor mats. Winter is not good, you know, the dirt that we all track in at home, we get it times a thousand here, you know, we change those floor mats weekly. The license inspections and permits line, we've seen an increase in inspections and especially, you know, it comes to Legionella and the air quality, we've increased that slightly just because there's more of those. We also have our inspections on our different, the elevator, for example. There's a slight increase there. We're hoping that there's a little over budget, we stay close to, you know, the 17,000 mark. But signage, staying the same, that's all the signs which we put up in the building. There's some that do need to be replaced, we have noticed those, but there is a line there for those items. Zamboni, that we do have two, they are expensive to run when it comes to their batteries, they are $12,000. When we don't foresee one happening for the next year or so, Jeremy's kind of keeping an eye out for any other Zambonis that are out there. It's a future capital purchase, but we've reduced that this year, we're trying to save money there. Same with our safety and first aid, our EpiPens, our first aid boxes around the, the building, we try and keep, well, we have to keep those up to date so that those are not cheap, as we all know. Council of Green, here's the electricity line. We're trying, we've actually, like you said, Jeremy really does well with preventive maintenance, we've monitored it, our demand is lower. So we've kept it as we were in previous, in 2023. So we are confident we can kind of keep it the same even with, you know, the NB power increase that's coming, so. And same with the natural gas line. And finally, just the pest control, that's, that's just a, you know, walking comes in and they do their thing and we're keeping that the same too, so.
So have you, have you considered doing industrial energy efficiency study for this place? I've tended a few.
Yeah.
And it's like, I think it would be valuable to do it here, I think there's lots of low hanging fruit.
Yeah. Jeremy and I, and Sean, actually, we started off on the NB Seeker program, which is, we, we were looking at all aspects of this building and trying to, to improve, you know, yeah, optimize energy efficiency. Jeremy has carried this forward on his own because, you know, he, like you said, he really is interested in recreation facilities and improving. He's in charge of all our other facilities too and, and they, they've worked very well, NB Seeker, and they keep coming back. And if there is a pilot project or something that is new, Jeremy will try it because then he can go on to his colleagues around the province and say, this is what we're doing. So yeah, the link that you sent us yesterday, you know, it's another thing which we'll certainly look at and we want to keep those numbers coming down. So yeah, so in the bottom line there, the total, only a slight increase, but trying to, trying to keep things as reasonably priced as we can, so. Yeah, next line is the, next group is the aquatic, so this is the GCC pool. Again, only a slight increase, a bit of a difference in 2023, I can explain that. In 2023, we went from having one full-time unionized lifeguard and two part-time to, we increased it to, initially it was two full-time and one part-time. And then we had six contracted staff that were not unionized, they weren't students, they were, some of them are semi-retired, some of them are retired. And when we went through the collective bargaining agreement with the union, it was one of those things, it was a good gesture just to bring everyone into the, to the unionized family, so to speak. With that, there is increased expenses. We also saw an increase in lifeguards, as the councillors from the town of St. Stephen will know, we were down to our bare bones for, for 2022, 23. COVID really didn't help us, Aaron has done a great job in training. We went from about nine staff to we're at like 27 now. So that's everyone, including unionized students, there's no contracted staff, everyone's, you know, where they should be. So we're proud of that and yes, there is a reflection in training, but we're seeing that, I think, in the, in the number of swimming programs and swimmers coming through and our lessons as well. So just moving further down the table there, program, equipment and supplies, that's everything that Aaron needs for his, his various programs, we've got a great variety of programming right now. We are seen kind of in the province, you know, to rival some of the larger cities because of the program we have. And considering our size now, who we can draw from, I think that's great. Maintenance repair, we've, we've held at 30,000. Chemicals, we've seen a slight reduction because we do buy in bulk, you can see some of the pictures that Jeff added. If you take a walk under the pool, it's incredibly well organized, it's well managed, we never run short of anything. And that carries over into the summer and if anything is needed at the outdoor pool, we kind of share it. But, you know, we've got, we've got a good handle on our chemicals right now. As I said, the training line has increased a bit, you know, this is just to keep us where we are. I think we've got a very good employee number and workforce right now, their training is good, they're keeping up to date on their training. And as you'll see in the uniforms, you know, we have to, we, we want to make sure everyone represents the municipality well and looks, looks right. So that's the costs there, so only an increase of 10,000 on. So only an increase of ten thousand on last year's budget for the aquatics. So if there's any questions on that, please let me know. Okay. Moving into the other areas of the GCC. Yes, the walking track is, it does need maintaining, it's, we, we keep that. It's the, the track, sometimes it does need some of the, the mats replacing or the, the water cooler, it needs, needs servicing. So that's that line there, we're keeping that the same. Same with the meeting and conference area repairs and maintenance. That's all the audio visual equipment, which is, it's coming up to, I hear rumblings from Michelle and Jeremy that we probably should, you know, do this or, you know, get that projector or a better microphone or whatever, but they, they are doing great with, with the AV equipment that we have right now and, and we don't really get any concerns or complaints about the users that come in and use the, the conference area. Slight decrease in Michelle's events equipment and supplies. Same with the, you know, linens and dry cleaning, slight increase there, that's just cost of inflation on some of those suppliers. And just a small increase in that fitness and equipment, that's the, the gym. Our treadmills are the originals, they are, the one currently doesn't work. We Band-Aid these for, you know, and so the twenty-five thousand is just a one-off budget increase for, for 2025, just to provide three brand-new treadmills that will reduce next year. It could be a capital, but we, we put it in here because Jeremy's ready to go on, on this. So that, is it for that group? If there is any questions, please let me know.
I know in the past I mentioned this, but is, is there ever any consideration still around a key fob system so that we could actually increase access and at different hours of the day too? And have the key fobs connected to the membership cards and things like that? Just because I think we would probably have quite an increase and I do get that feedback a lot in community where people would like to come in, use the walking track, they'd like to come in and use the gym early in the morning and then later in the evening. So I just wondered if that's, even if you can just look into it and bring back the, the cost of what something like that would, would cost us? And then also maybe the increased revenue that may come from that, like a rough idea?
So yeah, we, we actually, we did, we went to, and I think in 2022, we looked at this, that we had one of the key fob systems we, we looked at. That was about nine and a half thousand dollars back then. So that's probably closer to twelve or fifteen now, depending on, on which, which one you have. We also surveyed the users who were, at the time, because we were open at six, we were from six till eight in the morning. We were only finding that we would have on average, you know, four or five different users at that time. And if they were using the walking track, there wasn't, because it's free, there's no, there's no revenue generated from that. So that's when we came to council and when we discussed this with council, I think it was the, the town still at that time. And of course, if, if we don't have staff, if we don't have staff, I mean, they're getting, it was usually students who were working those two hours before, getting them to school is a tough ask, especially going into the winter months when we are, you know, asking kids to come in and, and come into the dark and, you know, work and then go on to school. We, this information we, we brought to council and it was decided we would, we would go with the eight AM starts and, and if there was any change, I don't, we didn't hear any, you know, there was two or three people that, that missed it, but they, they carried on using the gym at different times of the day. So I'm not sure if we would see that return on the investment of the, of the, of putting those, those alarms in. I mean, yes, we do have staff, maintenance staff in here as well. Early in the mornings, making sure, you know, they're doing their, their cleaning and their preparations for the, for the pool and the, and the rink. So we can, we can look into those again. Like I said, we're not, if anybody, if you pass those comments on to us and we can, we can certainly, you know, go into it again and review it some more, so.
Yeah, my, my follow-up is just because the climate of our community has changed. So, you know, some people that shifted from the track to walking outside at six AM aren't comfortable anymore walking outside, especially if they're seniors. So I've gotten that feedback before that sometimes they're nervous to walk in the dark on the trail at six AM. They, they may not have been that way in the past, but even in the past couple of years, things have changed so much. And it would just be interesting to see how much staff time has changed at the front desk, because when I'm in here, I noticed a lot of people coming in to go to the gym. That's a lot of admin time at the desk that they spend like saying, yep, okay, punching you in. Like I think that it would just, with technology now, everything is so quick and easy and everything is literally connected between cameras, key fobs and cards that it may actually be one of those situations where just like the sauna, when you fix it, they come. So it'd be a good test, I think, especially with the climate of community, but I'm just putting that out there.
It is, it's, yeah, I've seen the benefit of that, but it's just not fobs. You got to have all the doors that link to the fobs and you, and the person that sits in the front desk is always at the front desk or other, it's going to be there anyway, right? It's not, they're not, you're not asking them any more tasks and they're sitting at the front desk and somebody comes in, goes to the gym and they go, yeah, okay. So they're going to be there anyway, right? If it opens at eight, there're going to be somebody at the desk, so.
Yeah. Sorry about that. If, if we, if we had fobs and we, we could let anybody in and then there was just, you know, our, our maintenance crew, then they have to keep an eye on them, whereas if we're bringing somebody in, yeah, just to, to sit, we would have to, they'd have to monitor the cameras too. We were struggling to find staff at that time of day. It was a real struggle. You know, we could obviously, you know, bring in unionized staff and then you, you know, their, their costs go because you're, you're bringing them up and we're losing their hours in the day. So we, but we can, we can look into it, we can see what, what options there are there for sure. Next section is food and beverage services. And so, yeah, the, the wages and benefits, this is a slight decrease taken into account the, the staff who would have worked those Irishman games. They, they were on minimum wage, but they, they got money from their tips, so we reflected that. Again, it was a slight decrease, not ideal. Same, excuse me, with the, the canteen merchandise, we, we still have to, we still buy that for our canteen. We still have kids, you know, going through pop and candy and all that fun stuff, but the, the other side of it is the, the liquor and that we would have bought, we just won't be buying as much now, so we won't be selling as much. So a reflection there. Small equipment and general supplies, that's sometimes if it's a, you know, canteen piece of equipment that breaks or needs replacing or same with the, the upper kitchen, that stay the same as has all our licenses for the kitchen and we have to have music licenses as well. So in general, just a decrease on the, the bottom line there in the total column. So any questions on that food and beverage services section? Okay, special events. So this is the, the line that is reflected in revenue. So as we said, if there is a special event, we had the Home and Rec Show is one of the examples that we would use. If we were to have, you know, the, the circus or if we were to have a band come through, that this is where we would, we would pay for the, those costs and we would, that would see reflected in revenue on the other side, other side. So we just reduced it just because in previous years, like you said, we haven't used this as much. You know, we still have a good variety and a good number of, of events coming through this year, especially, you know, we had the, the circus, you know, we had the Home and Rec Show. And so, yeah, that's reflected there as is the special event wages. That's the students as well that would work, so. And then the vendors market, that's, there's, it's the first year we've done it and that, that thirty-five hundred is reflected in the revenue we would get from the, the vendors and the licenses that they, that they pay for us, so. Any questions on that section? Property. Yeah, this is, the, the property taxes kind of speaks for itself. An increase in the parking lot line painting. Again, Sean and his crew were very generous to us in previous years. They would paint our lines and they wouldn't send us an invoice for it, but we want to make sure that, you know, we're justifying every, every tin of paint and we are reflecting that in the budget this year, so. Any questions on that one? Library. Do you want to talk about that?
Sure. So essentially the library budget is, is status quo. So far, we've, we've been okay with our estimations on the cleaning, repairs and maintenance and the electricity. The trends look okay. The grant is the, the amount that the library board has submitted to us for consideration. It's the total amount that they submitted for, so it shows a nine hundred dollar increase there, but yeah, otherwise it's not a, not a budget that we, we spend a lot of time in just because it's, it operates fairly smoothly and, and we have limited, limiting things So overall, the, the summary for the rec and culture is there. It's approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollar reduction in our operating expenses predicted, that are predicted. this is, this continues to be a working document, obviously, as councillor Green learned, there might be a, a mathematical error, so we'll double check that with the Excel sheet that this comes from. But, but yeah, overall, I think Kev and his team have done a good job really just trying to justify everything and looking for things where we may have been overestimating our budget lines in the past and, and tuning those in with, with some trend analysis. So I, kudos to, to him and his team for really taking the, a sharp, a sharp pencil to their numbers. Okay, I will, all right, we'll get into even more boring stuff. General Government, so this is where, where I spent most of my time living. So the first section is actually you guys. The budget 2025 currently does show an increase in the stipends based on the, the bylaw that's currently under consideration. If that doesn't proceed for any reason, it's an easy change for us to make in the, in the budget documents, but it does include it at this point. Otherwise, status quo, except for memberships. Essentially, we pay for a couple of memberships out of this line. It's the UMB and the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. Both are, we just got the UMB bill today and it was, it's a pretty substantial one, but but we'll, we'll adjust accordingly. But yeah, unless there's any comments or questions on this section, I'll move on to the next section. It's twice, no? Okay. CAO office, again, not a lot of change here. The, much of this has to do, the growth since 2023 obviously is the CAO office budget lines that pick up the executive assistant that came on stream in late 2023 and, and it's really reflected, started in 2024, as well as the executive assistant for the, for the deputy CAO, for Mr. Morton, just because it wasn't a good spot to, to put her salary and benefits in, so it lives in the CAO's office section. And they, we've really started getting into some, getting both Celeste and Melanie, the, the assistants, some good training and, and conference opportunities. So there's small growth there in the travel and training portion to enhance their skillset beyond the, the exceptional ones they have now. But yeah, so pretty, pretty simple there as far as CAO's office basics go. Finance office, again, just looking mainly at the, the people costs for the department. What's being budgeted for here relates to a proposal before, before by the assistant treasurer to, to council recently that I know you're all reviewing and still debating on aspects of, but this would fully fund that scenario. And then once you guys make a rendered decision, we can adjust accordingly, but.
That's just, like you say, that's just based on a scenario, that's, there's nothing more to it than that, right?
On, need, need to go with a scenario, it's, it's, so that's what we, that's what we had to work with. A policy change can, can change that at any point.
So typically for, for the CAO department and the finance office, are these like standard numbers kind of across New Brunswick, across the Maritimes? What would be the, the average finance department cost if we looked at other areas? And same with the CAO department costs?
We could do, we could try and do a bit of a review for you, that's not a problem. I can't say I know those, those numbers off the top of my head though. I know our finance department has, is, has more personnel in it than, than many municipalities our size. That's not, that's not a secret. So, so there, I assume that there would be expanded costs alongside that, but, but we can do a little bit of a research project for you, for sure.
I had a question recently in community too about councillor stipends based on performance. This is just something that's kind of been floating through community. I don't know if that's something that other municipalities have considered. I, I don't, as a new councillor, I guess I'm trying to understand, I know that the transitional team sets certain numbers, but in terms of like the mayor's number, the deputy mayor's number, councillor numbers based on performance, are those things that are even achievable, possible? Or is this more kind of standard across the board? It has to be this way based on what the province sets and then we can make small amendments? But these are just kind of community questions that I'd love to have insight on if you have any answers.
So as far as councillor stipends goes, the, the transitional team worked from, from some background documents that were put together by the, the Francophone Association that set some matrix about, and it wasn't so much about council performance, it was about the responsibilities in each municipality and do you have a rec center, do you have this, do you have that? And, and they created a matrix that, that kind of established a hierarchy and, and put, put a, a wage range next to those. So the transitional team was presented that from the, from the facilitator, from the government and, and basically applied a very, very similar concept and, and that's how the facilitator came up with the numbers that he did. As far as changes going forward, one hundred percent, that's within the realm of council to decide anything they want. There's no, there's no matrix that the government holds that you'd say, you must apply this. It's, you know, you and your citizens deciding what's, what's the most appropriate thing for, for the budget and for, for the payments.
Has there ever been in, in kind of the history of municipalities, co-leadership models when it comes to amalgamation? Because I've often thought about this lately, you know, we have rural and urban councillors, we have like a huge amount of responsibility on predominantly the mayor, like a massive amount on one person. And of course, the deputy mayor as well has a huge responsibility on her. So I often wonder about that, you know? If you think about the size of our municipality now and all that comes with it, has there ever in the past been models where maybe the deputy mayor and the mayor actually have more of a co-leadership model and make the same wage or stipend to fully kind of collaborate together where maybe one, one co-leader takes on one huge portfolio and then the other takes on a different one? Just because I think about our municipality now, we have so much going on, like it's so diverse and wide-ranging and I don't really know how one person keeps up with it. Anyway, just, just one. Anyway, just, just wondering.
I can, I can put some questions. I don't personally know of one that was set up that way. But I certainly have a network of people that know a lot of things that I don't know. So I can put out some feelers and see what's, what's out there, what's either new or old or innovative or whatever. And, you know, again, the options are yours. I mean, there's nothing wrong with doing a little trailblazing from time to time too if you think it's the best thing for your community. So, but yeah, we can, I can just poke around, see what I can dig up.
That's also, I want to make it very clear to the public, that's when I'm saying that, I'm saying that Mayor McCackran has a lot of weight on his shoulders. The deputy mayor does as well. So when I just think about like the time and the day to actually do the mayor's job now, it, it really has changed. And, you know, you can see from the mayor's report that he put in that there, when I look at the amount of meetings, you know, almost every single day, there's something. So I'm just thinking about the amount of time it takes now. I just wonder about kind of having the ability to balance some of that responsibility so it's not all so much on one person. But it's just food for thought. We can just throw it, throw it out there and maybe see in the future if we can change things up a bit.
Really getting into the, what do we call it, the really boring side of administration. So we've got our, our budget here for our basic advertising. The second, the promotional advertising, we've reallocated some money from, it used to live under outside recreation, which made no sense, for the things like our branded coffee mugs and, and things like that. So our swag that we donate to things or to causes, so moved it up into the administrative where it properly belongs. So that's why you see that increase there. The decrease in the office computer purchase, we, we had to bump the budget up in 2024 for the installation of our new server, which was about $20,000. So we're just returning to normal on that one. The computers, computer services, that's got the, we've got a nice big chart that goes along with that, some of the different softwares and things that we have. And BrenNet, who's our IT support, does a fair bit of work for us to keep us, keep us moving. The special projects, general and corporate, we use those essentially as placeholders for the efficiency upgrades and things like that that we identify for things like from departmental reviews. Specifically in the corporate services side, the idea here is to, to get into digitized payroll, whether that's ADP or one of their competitor firms that we've looked at a few, we're looking at a few different firms, to get away from the mounds and mounds and mounds of paper timesheets that we pass around this place. So that is, identifies as a priority there. As far as the general gov services one, the council, and I will probably have a conversation about what's the top priority, but one of the ones for me is to, is to get a, digitize our budgeting software. Get it outside of, again, lots of Excel sheets being emailed back and forth into something more robust that what I've been evaluating is, it works very similar to our spreadsheets, but it also has a public accountability template that once the budget's approved, it goes directly to our website. People can drill down into different sections to see where their money's being spent, where it's coming in. And it also does, once we do all the spreadsheet work, it'll produce our budget books with the narrative that goes alongside it at the push of a button. So it'll save us, especially Celeste and me, a lot of time in preparing, in preparing a lot of documents. And we'll get a much better budget document out to the public that has more, more narrative around it for understanding and being able to ask good questions at town, town open houses and things like that. So I'm very keen on getting that going if, if council tends to agree with that. But you'll see that coming forward very soon because I'm quite eager about it. Travel and training in this section mainly was from the corporate services department. We had opted in 2024 with the intentions that some of the staff were going to be stepping up their training. The trend analysis told me that it wasn't happening, so we, we took some of the money away rather than having it just go to surplus in the end. We did buy some clothing for the corporate services team last year. Basically, we're looking at, that might be an every two to three years kind of cycle. So no, none planned for 2025. And then again, general software and support, lots of things go in there. Your Escribes gets paid for out of there, your, our Zoom, our E11, all those, these new softwares that we've been working on, the telematics system, actually, no, sorry, I apologize, that is not in here, that lives in Public Works. But those types of scenarios, we've got about 13 different softwares that we pay subscription fees for. That's where this, that's where that lives. So that's really what we've got going on there. So the big, the increase, the driver of the increase is the special projects for corporate services here, which based on the other work that we're, we're doing, we needed a fund to, to fund the improvements that we're planning. So I'll take, have you take questions?
Not so much a question, just an assumption that on the general software and support, I know you mentioned all the software. I'm assuming that includes the popular Alertable app that we provide to our citizens?
Alertable gets divided between here and the utility picks up part of that as well because of the, the functions it provides to the utility for water main break alerts and things like that. So we do share that across between the two companies. All right, so here we have kind of things that don't fit the, the normal things. It's a lot of it's outside. So our property taxes, which is the town hall portion of the GCC, the, our solicitor budget, I did bump that up a little bit based on some files that are ongoing at the moment that may, that may cost us a bit in the early part of next year. Civic relations, generally it's a fund that, that I use to either sponsor things like business galas for the, for the chamber or the BIA, or do some donations from time to time for that, under your guy, under your folks' direction. But it's, it takes care of some of those little requests that don't necessarily, either can't wait to get to a council meeting or don't really need, don't warrant going to a council meeting, but still are good things for out in the, out in the public. Little bit more, $500 more for training and development for our Joint Health and Safety Committee. That's what JHSC is. Our health and safety program has, when I arrived six and a half years ago, it almost didn't exist. We were under careful watch of GNB. Sean and his team have been working very hard to get us back on, back up to speed. And now Sean's assistant, Melanie, has been critical to getting, keeping it rolling and getting it to where it needs to be. So we put a little extra money in there to help with her, our training and, and keeping up to speed on, on all the changes that happen. So that's what that is. Cost of assessment is a number, right now that's an estimated number. We expect that number to be sent to my office in the coming days. It comes from GNB. It's a requisition. We just pay whatever the bill is. It does tend to go up every year, though. Liability insurance, we're still waiting on some more quotes to come in, some more numbers come in. So we're basically just doing a status quo on this at this point until we just, until we get everything in that we can evaluate. And the community grants fund has been 50,000 since, essentially since I arrived here when I, when, when we created the fund. And so I'm just keeping it there at this point in time. Obviously, we have a new community grants policy, which will help guide how those funds are expended. We do have a number of people who did follow the process and procedure and send us our applications. They're in a binder on my desk. So once we get through the budget process in the early new year, we'll, we'll be bringing those forward for, for your approval as well. So any questions on that?
This is a general question, just trying to mentally prepare myself for that time. But in terms of the community grants fund, would that be something that you would bring them all to us at once on the same night? Just because I'm thinking it wouldn't be like one coming in and then saying yes and then going to the next one and thinking, oh, maybe I should have waited. Like, how is that processed? Is that going to be just a whole kind of maybe committee of the whole night where we just go through them once a year type deal?
So the way it's set up is that staff does an initial review and grading based on the criteria. So we will apply the criteria, do grading, and we'll bring the, all of them with a grade next to them based on our, and then, so it should be, hopefully it's not a whole committee of the whole meeting because it will be pre-graded against your criteria. So, you know, obviously you might have questions on how we graded one thing versus another, but it should be fairly formulaic to get through the approval process, I hope.
Thank you. The community grants, as you know, I always pitch about that. Anyway, is it my understanding that when you apply for it, you send in a copy of your working, you know, of your working timesheet or whatever, your assets, liabilities or whatever? And is there, like, I don't agree, as you know, on giving 20,000 to one organization. I don't agree with it. I think that if 5,000 should be set for anybody that applies for it. But that's just me. Thank you.
Yes, your community, I don't have, I haven't looked at the grants policy in a little bit because it hasn't, hasn't been at the top of my priority yet. But there is a maximum grant available to each applicant now, which I can't remember if it was five or 10,000. 5,000, okay, thank you, councillor Eastman. So there is an upper limit. Obviously, it's a policy. Council always has the ability to, you know, do what they want to do outside of a program policy. But, but yeah, those are the criteria that are preset. So that gets us to essentially the, the general government summary, which last, pretty much the last slide of the evening, I got one more, but, and so minor increase and mainly that it relates around the, the special projects money that we're looking at bringing some, some tools in to enhance the effectiveness and efficiency of our team. And there were some increased costs within the proposal put forward by, by the Assistant Treasurer for, for the Finance Department, which you guys are actively reviewing. So otherwise, it's not, we haven't taken any big swings at anything through this budget. We will be probably talking about a few things under, under capital and, and our further discussions on, on other, the proposal before you. So, but I think at this point in time, it's shaping up pretty, pretty well.
This is just a comment, but I just want to shout out Celeste because I think adding her administrative position was a massive win for our community and for, as a councillor who likes lots of reminders, I just wanted to shout her out because it just goes to show that sometimes even one small change in administration, like the widespread impact that has on every citizen who reaches out or for yourself if you need support or as councillors if we need support, she's super responsive and works really, really hard and very professional. So I think that was, that's my favorite win so far in, in the administrative department. And I'm, I'm looking forward to the future wins we have in terms of finance and, and other areas.
Well said councillor. I hate to say it in front of her, but it's one of my favorite wins in the last couple budgets too. The last slide I wanted to put up, it's, it's not specifically the general government, but, and you'll see it when you get, when you have all the documents in front of you, it's throughout, but it's the RSC requisitions. I just wanted to put it in one spot for you to see what has come in. This is official. This is based on their final budget that was approved recently. So these numbers are locked in. They are not within your control. They must be in the, in the budget in the right spots, otherwise the GNB won't pass our budget, won't approve our budget. So I just wanted to give that a nice single spot where it was laid out because otherwise if you're looking for it, it can be a daunting task to go through all the lines to find it. I have to take a, a look at it, but I think it's actually a slight decrease, actually. Some things went up, some things went down, but I think overall it went down.
It went down overall, yes. And bring your attention to regional transportation, that may be credited back if something else doesn't fall through as well.
Have we heard any rumblings just with the change in government of, of this structure shifting at all? Is that something that the new government is looking at, the regional service commissions and how they're laid out? Or is, is this kind of set in stone? In terms of the transition plan, I can't, I don't, I'm not, I don't have the details on how they laid that out or if this is like a long-term contract or, I still struggle to completely understand the RSC and gotta start watching those meetings like councillor Greenlaw says, but.
I'll take a stab at answering that.
Yeah, thanks.
You're correct councillor. Susan Holt, our premier Susan Holt of Act is going to really take action on this and have reform anyway. So there will be some changes, I'm sure.
With that, Madam Chair, sorry, with that, Madam Chair, kind of concludes our tiptoe through recreation and general government. Next time we sit down, we'll be getting into some more fun things like Public Works and infrastructure. But again, trying to do this in bite-sized portions for you. And it's nice to have the chance to explore, you know, individual topics when we do it this way. So, and again, as always, if there's any questions, feel free to reach out either to myself or Celeste or whatever, and we'll, we'll do our best to get you answers or book you a time to sit down and have a chat because we are more than happy to do that.
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Lots of information to digest, but I think I have a better understanding of what, what is going on. So are there any comments or questions from council? So I'm going to call for a motion to adjourn.
I'm going to adjourn.
Councillor Harding, councillor Eastman, all those in favor?
Right.
Contrary? Motion carried. Well, thank you, everyone.